From Canyon Valley High School, DeAndre Nguyen. From Cooley Middle School, Amira Johnson, is that right? Or is it Amira? Amira. That's the prettier way to say it. Come on now. Of course. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Catherine Zia. Zia? Maybe? Zia, I did it. Dang, I'm so gun shy right now. It's bad. From Gilbert High School, Allison Carr. From Highland High School, Erin Labett. From Higley High School, Corbin Pierce.
Oh my goodness, we need to get a step stool.
Wow. From Leading Edge Early College, Skylar Ford. From Mesquite High School, Jimmy Belmonte. From Payne Junior High School, Jonathan Hanson. From Perry High School, Megan Colborne. From Sossaman Middle School, Dylan Zimmerman. Okay, this last one's hard, guys. Say a prayer for me here. From South Valley Junior High, Ephraim Bredenstein. Ephraim, I've heard it both ways.
That does conclude our Student Citizen of the Month portion of our meeting. Thank you all for coming and have a great rest of your week. We will begin our formal Town Council meeting in just a few minutes. Thank you all for joining us. We've already called the meeting to order and now we will do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We'd like to invite all scouts present to come down and assist us. This is a very well-dressed scout troop, one of the most well-dressed scout troops I've seen in council chambers, looking good. Come all the way down and Councilmember Anderson will assist you. Come on down.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got quite a group here tonight and this is our continuing tradition is to have scouts come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then a couple of things we do afterwards. So, we've asked Matthew if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What we'd like to do now is have each one of you introduce yourself, your name, and your rank, and we'll just pass it on down the line. We'll start here.
Hi, my name's Spencer Possisal. Right now I'm a Tenderfoot and I'm working on my communications merit badge.
Hi, my name is Matthew Guerrero. I'm a Star Scout and I'm working on my citizenship in the community.
My name is Nicholas Manwaring. I'm a Second Class Scout and I'm working on my citizenship in the community.
My name is Jake Specter. I am a Star Scout and I am working on citizenship of the community.
Hi, my name is Skylar Brim and I am working on, or I am a First Class and I am working on citizenship of the community.
My name is Riken Ruff. I am a Life Scout and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
My name is Nick Krikowski. I'm a Second Class and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
My name is Connor Stewart and I'm a Star Scout and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
My name is Joseph E. Hill. I am a Tenderfoot and I'm working in citizenship in the community.
My name's Ethan Weir. I'm a Star Scout and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
My name is Brent Robinall and I'm a Life Scout and I'm working on citizens in the community.
I'm Isaac Mathers and I'm a Second Class and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Connor Van Patten, I'm a Tenderfoot Scout and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Hello, my name is John Kane. I am a Life Scout and I am working on citizenship in the community.
Hi, my name is Caleb Romero. I am a Second Class and I'm working on my citizenship in the community.
Hi, my name is David Semayoa. I am a Tenderfoot and I am currently working on citizenship in the community.
Hi, I'm Neil Alexander. I am a Tenderfoot and I'm working on citizenship in the community.
I'm Ryan Ruff. I'm an Assistant Scout Master with Troop 88, First United Methodist Church in Gilbert.
And I'm Steve Robinall, Assistant Scout Master as well.
Thank you. Quite a group. We don't want them to leave empty-handed. We have a copy of the Constitution of the United States that we wish to give to each one of the scouts and they'll have that with them for the rest of their life, hopefully.
Thank you, Scouts, and for all the service that you provide. I've had the privilege of going to at least one Eagle Court of Honor at First United Methodist and enjoyed the ceremony very much. Tremendous group and obviously a great commitment to our youth. So, thank you to your leaders and I hope each of the scouts go home and thank their parents for ironing their shirts. Unless you did it yourself, then you get an extra high five. Nice work. Thanks for coming. Those scout shirts are not easy to iron. There's lots of pockets. At this time, we're privileged to have Pastor Tim Thompson join us and offer us an invocation. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels. And I'm filling in for David Wright tonight, who is going to be out of town. So, he asked me to fill in and it's always an honor to be here with you. And as in traditional form, I brought you a gift tonight. So, I always like to give you something. And all of us that have taken up public office or done something, or even in our career, we all want to succeed. We all want to be successful at what we do and we want to hit the mark. And in the Olympics, when that diver does the high dive and they go in and they make no splash, they say what? He nailed it, right? He nailed it. And so, today I brought for you a nail that says nailed it. And my hope is that before this council leaves office, that each of you will be able to look back on your career and say, "I nailed it. I nailed that. I nailed that decision. I nailed that project. I got it right." That you would be able to look back because all of us in life want to be able to nail it. And so, also with public office and with public service, there comes the burden of public opinion and the weight of the judgments that are made against us. And it says this in Colossians 2:14, "He canceled the record of the charges against us and he took it away by nailing it to the cross." And so, my prayer tonight is also that the judgments, the handwritten decrees that have maybe been written against you, the weight that has been upon you, you would also feel it break off of you tonight and that you would have the new strength to be able to go and to say, "You know what? As of today, I'm going to go for it and I'm going to nail it because Pastor Tim said, 'I can nail it.'" So, that's my prayer for you tonight. I have one for everybody, not everybody out here. Amen.
Pastor Tim Thompson not only serves his church community on a regular basis, but also serves in a capacity as part of For Our City and does a tremendous amount of work on behalf of all of the citizens of Gilbert. So, I think you're the one nailing it, but thank you for giving this to us. We appreciate it. At this time, we will proceed with some proclamations and presentations. If we could have our domestic violence team and all those who have been asked to come forward. We are wearing purple this evening because we want to make the community aware of domestic violence. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and we have a tremendous team and a great group who are looking out for those who are victims of domestic violence or those who may be victims of domestic violence. And we're grateful for all of you here. Councilmember Cook is an absolute advocate for this topic as well and has worked tirelessly through our regional council and on many different levels with our domestic violence team. So, I think what we'll do first is pass the mic down and ask each of you to tell us your connection to domestic violence.
My name is Brandon Wilson. I'm a detective in the Family Violence Unit at the Police Department.
My name is Stephanie Bradley. I'm a victim advocate with the Gilbert Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Dean Aguilera, victim advocate with the Prosecutor's Office.
Zach Albin, I'm an Assistant Town Prosecutor with the Gilbert Prosecutor's Office.
Hi, Jim Nuggerbauer, I'm the Town Prosecutor.
Amber Lee, Counselor with the Gilbert Police Department.
Kathleen Sullivan, Manager with the Gilbert Police Department.
Julia Dare, I'm Counselor for the Police Department.
Jennifer Hood, Counselor with the Police Department.
Rick Foss, Counselor with the Police Department.
Jeff Soderman, Sergeant, the Family Violence Unit.
Vic Perez, I'm a detective with the Family Violence Unit as well.
This group is busy and it's unfortunate that this is an issue that we really do need to address and face head-on in our community and they're doing it every day. And so, we're incredibly grateful for you. On behalf of the entire Town Council, I just want to read a couple lines from this proclamation that we'll issue today, but I hope you know it comes with sincere gratitude for the work that each of you are doing. "Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime affecting over 4 million Americans each year of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas Gilbert has dedicated family violence officers, police counselors, and victim advocates, and they are saving lives every single day. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. So, on behalf of the entire Town Council, I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month." I will pass this mic to our Councilmember Eddie Cook for some comments.
Well, thank you, Mayor. A couple of years ago, we did a needs assessment here in the Town of Gilbert and the number one need in our community that local government doesn't provide services for was families in crisis and domestic violence was on the top of that list. And this team here, as Pastor Tim said, "You folks nail it every day." And I've been part of this journey for over two years, working with these individuals and making DV zero here in Gilbert, but more importantly, making DV zero in our county and in our state. And these folks here are just a small example of dedication in helping our community. So, I would ask you if you can give these wonderful folks a round of applause for their service to our community.
The Town of Gilbert has about 1,300 employees who work really hard, who do a really good job to make this community as great as it is. One of them that we're recognizing tonight, after 40 years of public service, has said that's enough. He's ready to retire. We want to invite up Battalion Chief Herb Hamm. Come on up, let's give him a round of applause. Now, like many professions, and perhaps firefighters are even a little bit more extreme in this sense, they have two families. They have their family at home, which we want to invite up to be a part of this, and then also their fire family that we want to invite up to be a part of this as well. So, firefighters, all the chiefs that are in the back, Herb, bring your family up. I can't force them up here. We want you guys to be a part of this as well. We won't introduce everybody because apparently he brought the entire family. He wasn't kidding when he brought them. But we do want to say thank you to Battalion Chief Hamm, to his family. This would never have happened. He wouldn't have been able to serve so many years and done such a great job without his family and without his fire family. So, we say thank you to each one of you as part of this. We want to read parts of a proclamation, as is customary with firefighters and perhaps some of the other departments as well. About an hour and a half ago, they had a roast of Battalion Chief across the street. And sometimes I wish that all the public would come to that because there's some pretty funny stories that are part of that. We won't go through all those tonight. He's been embarrassed once or twice already today. But I do want to read a couple of lines of this proclamation. "Since 1993, Herb has served the Town of Gilbert admirably in many roles. It's with immense gratitude and appreciation that we recognize and commend him for his extensive and longstanding service. Throughout his career, he has exemplified the values of the Town of Gilbert. He has conducted himself with the utmost integrity, treating the public and his crews with high level of professionalism. He has earned their respect of his coworkers by being fair and balanced when dealing with difficult situations. He has a calm composure that is needed in emergencies and he has never flinched from taking command of high-pressure situations. As Herb Hamm brings to close his distinguished 24 years of service with the Town of Gilbert, we sincerely and enthusiastically thank him for his leadership and commitment to service. On behalf of the Town Council, the citizens of this great community, I convey my appreciation along with the rest of the council, along with the mayor, to Battalion Chief Herb Hamm for his outstanding contributions and professionalism. We wish him the best in his retirement." We would have Battalion Chief Hamm say a few words, but like most firefighters, police officers, employees of the town, he doesn't want to say anything, doesn't want the spotlight any longer than he can have it. We appreciate his service. Chief Joe Bush has begged to speak a little bit, but because of time restraints, we're going to pass the microphone on the chief. But thank you, Battalion Chief. We appreciate it.
I attended that roast this afternoon and some of those stories are pretty funny. I love going to those retirements. As much as I hate going to those retirements, I love going to those retirements because of the traditions and the rituals, especially with police and fire that they do and the way that they honor every member of their team. Thank you, Herb, for your service and best of luck in everything that you do in the future. Next, we'd like to recognize our Gilbert Feeding Families group. If I could have anybody that was on the group come down here and join me, please. I see Susan and Judy. Ellie. So, we switched our Gilbert Feeding Families Month up this year to September and it was Hunger Action Month? Hunger Action Month? I always want to say awareness, but I guess it's the same thing, right? In the Town of Gilbert, and this team worked tirelessly to raise money and to collect food and they had several different events in the course of the month, a couple of which that I was able to participate in. I think they're my favorite things that I've done as a councilmember so far and we went around and sold ice cream in the afternoon within the three buildings. ice cream in the afternoon within the three buildings here on this campus, across the street and here on this campus, and just talked to the staff and handed out ice creams and laughed and joked and had a good time. And I think we raised a good portion of the money during that time. So it was fun and we got to spend a lot of time together and get to know each other better and we raised a lot of money and did a lot of good at the same time. I'm going to pass the mic to Susan because she has really run this whole program and I was just their liaison. So I want to recognize her and let her do the whole rest of the presentation, please. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for allowing us to do this. It was really a pleasure. It was fun. It was great to get out in the community, work with community partners, and find sponsorships. And we had a really good time. I would love to tell you, it was hard work, but it was also fun. So those are some of our sponsors that we partnered with during our month-long community fundraiser. We had a preschool competition where preschools collected food and the winner of our food collection gets to be read a story by our mayor. So we're very thankful to that and bring cookies. And so they're going to, I think it was Goddard School, is going to get a story read. And yeah, so it's just, it's a great fundraiser. It's great to be out in the community. We're super thankful to the Gilbert Farmers Market for giving us a booth every week and going out there and meeting people and talking to people and playing with our dogs. And it was great. It was, it makes work fun. There's some pictures of us being us.
Silly.
Yeah, silly is a good word. So it was, I love it. I hope that every year we continue to do this. You would be surprised how many families in Gilbert need food. The United Food Bank, oh gosh, what is the number? 216,000 meals were provided to the Town of Gilbert last year in 2016. So it's one of those things that you don't think hits home, but you just don't have any idea. So whatever amount we can collect, we're happy to collect and we will do it every year. Every year I'm here, I plan on doing it as long as you allow us to. So I would love to have Hunter Construction come up. They're one of our large sponsors this year and they have a check to present to United Food Bank. This is Chuck.
Hi, Chuck English with Hunter Contracting. Hunter Contracting has been a longtime Gilbert company and we're proud to present this check for the United Food Bank for $2,500. Appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
We definitely couldn't do this without sponsors like Hunter Contracting and are looking forward to next year partnering with more of our community partners. I want to take a minute to recognize an amazing committee. This is a very small portion of us. It's a volunteer thing that we do. We work hard all day. So this was what we could get here today. But I'm going to give the mic to them to introduce themselves. My name is Susan Marisco. I'm in human resources.
Kelly LaFever, human resources.
Judy Martinez, Town Clerk's Office.
Toby Crooks, engineering.
Ashley Rakiki, Public Affairs with the Gilbert Police Department.
We could not, I don't even know, I couldn't even stand up here without them. They're amazing. Amazing. And if they do half of what they did for this committee in their daily job, like, I can't, I can't tell you. I'm so thankful. So, thank you.
I will look to Vice Mayor Peterson for any communications from citizens. Oh, let's do that. The clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Dan Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Lisa. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, we have one request to speak from Joe Guusik. So Joe, if you'll come on up, you'll have, I think, three minutes. Watch slides. You know the, you know the routine. Just make sure you say your name and whether or not you're a Gilbert resident for the record.
I will. Mayor Daniels, fellow town council members, all Gilbert staff, residents, and guests of our beautiful community. My name is Joe Guusik and I'm your lovable, slightly annoying American citizen. I'm your education Lorax. I want to play off what Pastor Thompson said. We're going to nail it. But we're going to nail it in the future. And over the next several months, I'm going to speak a lot and I want you to know why I'm going to speak a lot. And it comes down to two words: build out. If you've never experienced, if you've never seen it, it's not fun. Inflation is one of those insidious things that happen and when you hit build out, you have nowhere to go but up or down. So it's very careful, it's very important that we hit the number. So as I shared with you, as Pastor Thompson said, we're going to nail it. We're going to look into the future and figure out where we're at today and how we're going to get there in the future. Because yes, growth pays for growth, but it doesn't necessarily pay for something that needs to be replaced in the future. In the state of Arizona, we are very good at spending and we are very good at not spending. We're not always the very best at investing. So it becomes very careful for us to be so truly important that we focus on this. And I'm going to talk about several detailed things over the next few months. I want to share something with you why I'm going to do this. I'm not sure you've ever seen the Citizens Almanac, the U.S. Citizens and Immigration Services. It's an almanac for your citizenship. And there, they have rights and responsibilities. And one of our responsibilities as citizens of this beautiful community of ours is to participate in our local community. And you're welcome to start the clock anytime you want, or I'm going to talk a long time. Being responsible member of one's local community is important to the success of representative democracy. Community engagement through volunteerism, participation in town hall meetings, that's me. And public hearings and joining a local parent-teacher association, running for public office are always individuals, are always ways individuals can actively contribute to a well-being of the community. As Mayor Daniels, you put a post up there today, Team Gilbert. And they do deserve this applaud and this acknowledgement that they are one group that serves us all. But one of these weeks, we should ask everybody in this town to recognize that they can be part of Team Gilbert. It is absolutely, truly important that we make sure that we hit it. So to share with you just a little serendipity, I typically eat lunch across the street that sprouts from where I work. My favorite meal isn't there. So I went to pay an express. And by the way, I got a fortune cookie. I want to share with you what the words were. You're eager to share yourself and your possessions. I'm here to serve you and I'm here to ensure that, as Pastor Thompson said, we're going to nail it. We're going to show the rest of the world what it's like to do it the right way. Thank you. And I will end with this. I'm going to leave because I'm going to go to another meeting and start to talk to our state-elected officials about, you know, my number-one priority, education. And I appreciate you all wearing that wristband that I gave you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. That moves us to the consent calendar portion of our agenda and I look to Vice Mayor Peterson for a motion.
Mayor, I'm only aware of four items, no, sorry, five. And I'm just going to double-check here because we were a little bit scattered. So items 14, 16, 20, 26, and 27. And of course, 15 is removed from the agenda. But if there's any others from the council, I'll just see now. Sure, I'll say it one more time. It was 14, 16, 20, 26, and 27 have been requested. Okay, seeing none, no others. Mayor, I move to approve items 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you, Vice Mayor. That moves us to item 14.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked to remove that one and I'm not intending to turn it into a big discussion. It's just another example of one-time funds going to an ongoing expense in terms of we're using debt to pay for repair and replacement. Just something I don't agree with. So pull that. Same story goes with 16. So unless someone else wants to discuss it, I just pulled it. We can vote separately, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion for agenda items 14 and 16.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda items 14 and 16.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 4-3 vote. Thank you. That moves to agenda item 20.
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson asked for that item to be pulled. So look to him.
Just a very quick question. We, generally when there's a change order that comes through, it's a small portion, small percentage of an original contract. This one happens to be three or four times the, what seems to be the original work. And I just wanted to ask a question of someone. Did we miss the vote when we first looked at this? Or is there something that's come up since to cause that we're spending three or four times the original amount for the, for the change order?
Good evening. My name is Brad Richards. I'm a senior project manager with CIP. Mayor Daniels, council, Councilman Anderson. No, we didn't, we didn't miss the vote. What we decided as a team, that we would go in with a lean contract initially with pre-construction services for this effort. The goal was, the town had been doing some due diligence. We were waiting for that information to come in. And in an exercise of balancing the schedule, which is quite aggressive on this project, we went ahead and got the contractor under contract to do the work that we know we needed. And then pending the work, or the information that came in from our due diligence exercise, we were able to more precisely price and scope his work for that, for that effort. So rather than come in with a contract that had a rather large allowance initially with some unknowns, we came in with a lean contract initially and then waited so we could better refine the scope and cost that you see for this change order.
But it's all, it all falls within what was budgeted in the CIP for this particular project?
Yeah. One other comment. That is correct. It is in budget and it was also work that is required. And we knew in some way it was going to be required. But in terms of the actual fine details of what the contractor is going to be doing to provide the design engineer with the information he needs to finish so we can get to the full construction phase of the project.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson, just so you know, I had the same concern. And this is an unusual deal where we had to spend some money and get started to learn more about the project so we knew what the next phase would look like. It's, it's a change order technically, but it's more like Phase Two of the process, I would say.
It's kind of like you have to pass the bill to know what's in it.
That sounds not so good, but I would say not like that.
Not as painful.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Move to approve item 20 as posted in the public documents.
Second.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. And that leaves us to agenda item 27. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I've made my opinion, oh, sorry, 26. So Mayor, I made my opinion clear on this kind of an item. So no need for further discussion. Just don't think tax or dollars should be going to these efforts, although I certainly support them through voluntary means. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 26.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. And now agenda item 27. Sorry, Jolene, I was excited. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I can, I asked to have that pulled. I didn't know if you wanted to have some presentation first or just jump right in?
Jump right in.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I want to start by saying I spent a good amount of time with Jolene Fleck on this and spent quite a lot of time studying it. And I love the concept. I love the concept of what we're trying to do. And I think it fits very much in line with, with my own personal views and goals on how we should handle compensation. And that is that we want to pay everyone fairly, equitably, and we want it to match the market. And so the goal here is to simply fine-tune that so that we can do that a little more accurately and tighter. And I support that and I appreciate it. So I first want to point that out. There were a couple of concerns that I had. One being that there was no clear definition of market rate. What is market rate? How is it defined? And so Jolene and I met and we talked about that and she typed up a definition that I have here. Market rate represents the median or, in other words, the 50th percentile of the jobs price range and is consistent with a fair and competitive rate of pay. So one of my two changes I'm suggesting is to add that definition so that we all can agree on what the market rate is and how it's defined. And I think that that's, I think that's right in line with the goals of the document. So I think it only adds to it and helps it. So the other concern I had was just simply how we're defining the market that we're drawing our data from. It would be strange for us to pull data from, sometimes from California, sometimes from Washington or heaven forbid, Canada. I mean, I don't know. We had no definition of what our boundaries are as far as our market that we're looking at. So I just think we need something to define that talent pool, if you will. And so Jolene also seemed to agree that that was good. And, and so what we did, she typed this up as well. Basically, market data is defined. It says, "When available and applicable, private sector data will be utilized." I also, we had that in the previous. I think that's important. Appropriate sources of data include employer-reported pay from a reputable source that's not older than one year. There was no change in that line. But it says, "The scope of data considered should reflect the Phoenix metropolitan area unless there's a business reason to redefine the talent market." I just think that's most appropriate in most cases. And again, I think that Jolene's on board with that as well. So those are the two changes I'd like to suggest. Otherwise, I applaud it. I think it's wonderful. And I think these actually just go right in line with the goals of the document.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cook?
Vice Mayor, could you repeat the first one? I just want to hear the language of the 50th percentile again.
Sure. Market rate, this is the definition. The market rate represents the median or the 50th percentile of the jobs price range and is consistent with a fair and competitive rate of pay. So it's basically just telling you, market rate is the 50th percentile, which is something we've all...
Based upon the median, which that, to me, was the important factor.
Median and that same thing, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Just a comment and an observation that I had on this. I have seen over the years many different compensation philosophies and rules come to this organization. Some of them good, some of them not so good. Some of them created an atmosphere of uneasiness and distrust. I'm looking forward to this one and hopeful that what we do is create an atmosphere that is fair, one that is consistent, and one that is transparent for the employees. I look forward in the future to hearing from the employees on how their reaction is to this new philosophy.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 27, adding the changes that I read in and have written down and will submit for the record.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That actually concludes our consent calendar. This is to the public hearing. All items be heard at one public hearing. Have there been any requests to speak from either council or from the public on public hearing items?
None from the public, Mayor. And I'm not aware of any from the council, but we'll look now.
Okay. We will open the public hearing on agenda items 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44. I will close the public hearing on those items and entertain a motion.
Move to approve all of those items, Mayor.
Second. Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries... That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. That moves us to the administrative items and agenda item 45.
Mayor, just a comment here. Sorry I didn't move these two up. We've been so long, I just want to make sure we took our time to make sure we knew the liaison was, that was going to be making motion and such. So, I think 45 will be Councilmember Gray, and then 46 should be Anderson.
Mayor Daniels, I move for item 45 that we consider the appointment, excuse me, of Stephanie Birkins to the Arizona Self-Inured Trust Fund for Health Insurance Benefits with a term beginning in October 20th, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2020.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, agenda item 46.
Thank you, Mayor. We had the opportunity to interview some very well-qualified candidates for the Redevelopment Commission. And tonight, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Tyler Jones and Peter Shaka to terms on the Redevelopment Commission beginning November 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2021.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Thank you to all of the individuals who continue to apply for our boards and commissions. We have a tremendous group of citizens that are willing to volunteer their time on behalf of the community, and we continue to be grateful for that. This time, we'll move to a presentation on tourism from our Office of Economic Development. I think we get to meet a new team member tonight, if I understand that correctly.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Dan Henderson, and I serve as the Economic Development Director. At this time, I'd like to introduce Glenn Schlotman, who serves as our Tourism Administrator. He's a relatively new hire, been on board a little less than 90 days, and he will be presenting the, the plan for tourism. And with that, here's Glenn.
Welcome to the team, Glenn. Glad to see you. I know that your team was anxiously awaiting your arrival, so, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Mayor, council, my name is Glenn Schlotman. I'm the Tourism Administrator, as Dan covered already. I do not have an accent tonight. This presentation is simply to inform and educate on the tourism strategic plan that was set forth at the end of 2016. What I'd like to do is move straight into finding tourism in Gilbert. We have four distinct categories of, of tourists in, in Gilbert. The first we can define is the day visitor. This is a resident, this is a resident of a neighboring community or metro Phoenix visitor spending a portion of their day here in Gilbert. A, a good example of this is someone coming to the farmer's market. Overnight visitors, these folks, this could include medical tourists. Generally, they are from outside of Arizona, and they're staying the night in Gilbert and using Gilbert as a hub to explore metro Phoenix and all of Arizona. This, this is often folks who are visiting their friends and relatives here in the community of Gilbert. We also have business travelers. They come in, they stay in the hotels, and they may or may not spend time exploring Gilbert while they're here. They're often here possibly to attend a meeting with, with a, a local business and, and they're staying in town. Groups, we have, we have weddings that come in, we have lots of conferences and meetings, and youth sports is also a visitor pro, or segment for us. As those visitors come into Gilbert, they travel by many means, they spend their money here within the community, and they, they purchase gas, they purchase food, they may or may not stay in a hotel. That money goes into the economy, and it provides support for jobs and businesses in the community. It generates general fund revenue, it supports the local economy, and it contributes to the quality of life. Tourism's a big industry in the U.S. It's a $990 billion industry. Arizona is 16th as far as states go, and in Arizona, it's a $21 billion industry. The money that, the visitor spending that comes in, and the tax benefits from tourism offset taxes for Americans on average of $1,200 for, for an average American. And in Arizona, it's, it's closer to just over $1,100. In Gilbert, we can look at visitor spending by legislative district. Let's go to that real quick, just to show you the map of the, the legislative districts here in Arizona. 12 overlaps Gilbert, Gilbert very well, also includes Queen Creek. But it gives us a good picture of the visitor spending in, here in Gilbert. So when we look at Gilbert, legislative district 12 is underperforming and has the lowest share of statewide visitor spending at 1.13%. However, there is potential for growth and increasing that market share. And I just included a comparison with LD 17 and Chandler. The reason for the LD underperforming is simply that Gilbert has a very low supply of hotels. When you look at the Southeast Valley, Gilbert only makes up 3% of the hotel room supply within this area. Now, while we have a small, small supply, we lead the group in occupancy, average daily rate, and revenue per available room. This basically shows us that there's potential for growth within the market. And as Gilbert has added hotels to the community, we've seen demand hold steady with that growth. So based on the current market conditions and support from the town for tourism efforts at or above its current means, we can project a, a market share increase in five years from 1.13% to 1.23%. That sounds like a very modest increase, but that 10th of a percent in Arizona visitor spending equates to $21 million in visitor spending increase to Gilbert per year, and that's $1.7 million per year to the general fund. So looking at the plan brought forth by the five-year strategic plan, we wanted to set up tracking measures before we really get into the objectives. So we'll look at tourism indicators, and these are best practices in the industry for, for looking at tourism growth. Lodging demand is, will be our primary indicator. Also lodging performance, revenue from restaurants and attractions, airport deployments, and then tourism districts such as the Heritage District, Agrotopia, Santam Village, Viparian Preserve, the, the Historical Museum, and all the districts here within the community, as well as the regional park, once it's online. And then we'll also look at Arizona Office Tourism indicators as indication of the performance of the industry within the state. As we move forward with campaigns, we'll track media impressions, conversions, and indicators, and how these campaigns may fluctuate the indicators. And then as well, year-over-year impressions on the website and social media. The vision, if, as indicated for, for Discover Gilbert, one, one way we can take this is Gilbert is the second safest city in the U.S. and the preferred destination for metropolitan Phoenix for business and leisure travelers to explore the greater metro area and statewide So getting right into the objectives for the, for the five-year plan. The first year, we want to set a foundation for moving things forward and build that marketing plan for Discover Gilbert and marketing Gilbert as an emerging gateway community, which essentially means Gilbert is a home base for people when they're coming to explore the metro Phoenix and all of Arizona. We'll also revamp the website, work on the visitor's guide and social media, and get the things, get our marketing pieces in place so that we can move forward and help drive visitation to the state. And then we'll also engage constituents and connect Gilbert's community, continue to connect Gilbert's tourism partners. We'll drive, and the second year, we'll drive overnight stays and visitation, so we'll have everything in place and we'll be focused on moving the needle. We'll also assess the infrastructure and ability to host and attract events. In the third year, we'll sta, we'll establish regional partnerships to drive group travel, working with communities like Mesa, Chandler, and Tempe on those efforts. And then we'll also drive visitor spending through niche markets that we see within the communities, such as birders are an opportunity, bikers, culinary, travelers, foodies. These are, these are potential options. There's, there's many more that could be options as well. And then, in year five, we'll look back at 1, 2, and 3 and say, okay, we, we said we were, we were going to do this. What did we do? And what worked for us? And then reassess those, those goals and establish goals for the fall, the last two years to move forward. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Thank you for the update. It's been a while, and we are grateful that you're on board and driving some traffic here to, to Gilbert. Not traffic, like, as traffic, like flocking up the roads, but the good kind that brings tax dollars into our community and also celebrates the quality of life that we have here. So thank you for your efforts. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Any board commission or committee reports from council? Seeing none, we will move to future meetings, which we have several coming up, and we look forward to that. Any report from our town manager and current events?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any report from council?
Mayor, this is our final council meeting before I run for good on Saturday, October 28th. And I'm happy to report that we have had more sponsors this year than last year by quite a lot. We're actually almost at $14,000 in sponsorships. And so, we've had many wonderful partners step forward. They care about the community. We want to combat youth substance abuse, and that's what you're seeing, is people are passionate about that. What we need now, Mayor, is we need people to sign up for the race. We are ready for a lot of runners, and we've got a good amount already started, but we want to finish that out and see everybody there participating, learning more about how they can combat substance abuse in their families, in their neighborhoods, as leaders in, in different ways. And so, it's going to be a great event. I challenge the council also to sign up for the race. Would love to see you there. We'll certainly recognize you if you're there. Come. Seriously, though, irunforgood.org, please register, and it's all going to go to a great cause, and actually, right by the way of our own Neighbor to Neighbor Fund. So, a good funding mechanism, we know that we'll do a good job with that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other reports from other council members?
I have three items I just want a quick update on. One is a congratulations to Chief Solberg, our Gilbert Police Chief. He received an award for law enforcement from the N double East, East Valley NAACP on Saturday, and we were grateful to have him honored for his work in the East Valley. Also, our own Dana Birchman, our Chief Digital Government Communications, I just gave her like six different additional titles. You all know who Dana is. Dana received a Modern Government Leadership Award for her work. She continues to bring positive, positive awards and accolades to the town of Gilbert, and we're grateful for her work and for the work of her team. They all work very well together. And then there's one more slide item I just want to make sure people know, and that is that we're requesting our Gilbert residents to create videos about their life in Gilbert and to send those into our digital team. Those videos will be featured at our annual State of the Town, which will be held in January. And I missed this slide earlier, so Heather's helping me pull it up. Thank you, Heather. You're doing great. But, lots of opportunity for you all to share about your life in Gilbert. 250,000 residents strong now in the town of Gilbert, quarter of a million people. Everyone leads a little diverse life here in our town, and we would love to have people submit their videos about their own life in Gilbert. So, thank you very much. I think with all of that, I will...
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Mayor, one thing I appreciate about you is you really move us through the agenda quickly.
When we get to the agenda, I like to get there.
I know. I really appreciate that. And I probably wasn't fast enough on 47, but if, if you're okay, if I could make a comment, and I don't know if anybody else on the topic of tourism. I know some of them have already scrambled out here. Just on the tracking slide, I guess the, the only thing I wanted to make sure we include in there, and when we talk about all these metrics, I want to make sure that we're tracking real dollars out and real dollars in. I think all of those other things are great, but those are really soft metrics. I think at the end of the day, what we're trying to do here is to say, all this emphasis on tourism is going to really return hard dollars back. And I'd just like that to be added in terms of the tracking and accountability. And I would hope either this council, as we review it, or future councils, will have the courage to say, if we're not really seeing a substantive return, then we sunset it, change it significantly. But, hard dollars out and in should be a key piece of that tracking. So anyway, Mayor, thank you for letting me go back in the agenda on that.
Mayor, so it sounds like Councilmember Taylor wants to hire some more bodies here in Gilbert to keep track of that, because that's what it's going to take. But anyways, I, I'm sorry, I'm just joking with that. I do want to bring up, I do want to bring up a point. This coming Saturday, all of you have been invited to, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up, to the Gilbert Parks Foundation, which is the Lakeside Lual, which is right going to be out here. So, if you want to help in the, you know, park cost and all that, you know, come and contribute your, your own dollars to helping the Gilbert Park Foundation. It's a fantastic organization, and we'd love for all of you to be there this Saturday to see their annual Lual Night in the Park this Saturday. You can, I'm not wearing a skirt.
Well, we hope you're at least wearing the hat, so that'd be terrific.
But you can dress with a, you know, Hawaiian, you know, outfit and, you know, shorts and so forth. But anyways, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. With that, is there a motion to recess regular meeting and reconvene in an executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We'll acclimate. Thank you.